So I'll call the meeting to order, and this is our special meeting July 17th with Lloyd Builders. We have everyone here, so the approval of the agenda, we'll need a motion to, we're going to meet with Lloyd Builders to review and consider bid packages for construction.
Move.
In a second. Any other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And oh, we forgot to put in here it would be done in an hour. It's too late, I guess. Just kidding. Brad told us that this would be a while, so, and we want to do it right. So thank you for being here, and how do you want to start this?
Uh, just at this point, I think the guys have got all the bids kind of actually down, and I don't know as many real changes since we met last time, or anything, Randy?
No, no.
Uh, if you want to kind of go through, I think for the benefit of commissioners, uh, how the bidding went, and kind of some of the stuff you guys mentioned, what the challenges were, and you want to talk about that, and then we'll get into your agreement, so.
Okay. Well, I'll dive a little bit into the past of how we received the bids, and then if we need to dial into some weeds, we will, then we'll discuss numbers. Uh, we'll talk about who all the low bids were, or the most responsive bids were, and then I brought all of the quotes, so if you have questions about anybody, we can dive in as deep as you'd like, or we can keep it as surface as you'd like.
And you are, and I'm sorry, should know, but we've, it's been months since we've met.
Yeah, I'm Randy Flowers.
Okay.
I'm the VP of Operations for Lloyd Builders, but I will also be the project manager on this, on this job. So I'll be handling the day-to-day construction from the office side, and then we'll have the superintendent, Tom Scherrath, be handling day-to-day in the field.
Okay.
And also handle all the pre-construction estimates as well. Uh, so we started a while ago with just kind of a, uh, just a preliminary meeting before the bids, really when the project first kind of started taking shape, inviting members of the community, subcontractors out, just as an informational meeting. Made sure everybody signed in so we could contact them later, and make sure that we chased them for sub-bids. That was our, that was our first introduction, and then we started floating out word to, as we do other projects around here, we're doing a small addition in Minneapolis now for their, for their jail. But we just started getting the word out to people, letting them know the plans are going to be ready at a specific time, keep it on your schedule, we really need your bids, we need your participation. When the drawings came out, then we obviously distributed that to our database, we have a database of about twenty-five hundred subcontractors, so we sent that out to all of them. We went through a plan room called Drexel Technologies in Lenexa, and they've got thousands of people in their database, they send it out to them as well. We also reached out to all the plan rooms, both, both physical plan rooms, like the AGC and ABC, but also electronic plan rooms, like the Blue Book in different areas. And then we reached out to surrounding states as well, so we put them in plan rooms in Oklahoma, Colorado, Nebraska, Missouri, just trying to get as much participation as we could. When, after we sent the drawings out, then we start calling people immediately and start gauging interest. At, at that point, a lot of people had already lined up their summer work, and we saw that participation might be a little bit low, so we devoted two people, project manager in our office, and then intern, that did nothing but make calls for about two and a half weeks full-time, and they would just request people, "Have you heard about our job?", or, you know, "What kind of interest are you have?", "Can we log you in as a positive for bidding this?". Then we had a pre-bid onsite, everybody came here, showed up, had, had fair participation for that, where we just kind of went, excuse me, went through the project and answered questions. And then went that route, and then bid day came, so all of the bids came into our office, and then we met with Brad and John. They came to our office, we got all the bids ready for them, we could review them, we went down everybody's number, subcontract, or their, their bid number, looked at who was low, who was high, what we needed to do from there. So, one thing we did in our review that day was, well, let me back up. We also, as part of our bid form, when we asked the subs to bid the job, we asked them to provide a value for the courthouse renovation and a value for the jail, just so we could see how everything was. So we reached out back to them, we saw where the numbers were, they were a little bit higher than we wanted to, participation was a little bit lower than we wanted it to be, um, so that kind of helped the prices be a little bit higher than we wanted. But we noticed that the jail price was coming in right, right in line with where we thought it would be, and the courthouse was a little bit more than we thought it would be. So, uh, what we decided to pursue was go back to all of the subcontractors. We didn't reach out to everybody, the bids, they were, you know, sky-high, we didn't, we didn't bother going back to them, but at least the low two, sometimes three bidders, and said, "What is your price if we do the jail only now?". Well, we redesigned the courthouse, get that more in line with what we anticipated, both dollar-wise and scope-wise. So we reached out to them, everybody basically rebid the job, just looking at the jail only, see where those numbers were. And so those are the numbers that we're ready to present today, is, is kind of the jail-only portion of the project. So, I've got those numbers that we can review, that I wanted to see first, is there any questions on our bid procedure, or how we got the numbers, or? I kind of talked fast, but I-
No, I appreciate that you went out and pursued some additional interest and tried to get that involved, because I think that helps, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're ready for the meat and potatoes.
All right.
Right down to it.
What I've done is just prepared a spreadsheet for, it's out. Just a spreadsheet summary of all of the bid packages. And-
Kathy, do you need one, or do you have one? Chanel always likes numbers.
All right, so we'll run through these real quick. I listed what bid packages were, just a short description of what the bid package is, I can dive in deeper into descriptions of those if you'd like. The cost, then a cost per square foot, and then if there's a subcontractor involved, who that low subcontractor was, and we can talk about those as well. So, general, general conditions, that is Lloyd Builders' portion, and that is, that takes care of things like supervisor, project manager for the time that he's spending on the project, job trailers, fences, temporary chiller, surveying dumpsters, porta-potties, all the stuff that it takes from our end to actually build, build the project. Selected demolition, that was bid package one, that's not applicable for this project, since it's all new construction on the jail. When we do the courthouse renovation, we'll have some, quite a bit of selected demolition. Site and building concrete, that's all the foundation walls, footings, slabs, curbs and gutter, concrete paving. And that was Creed Concrete Construction, was the low bid for there.
For there, so.
I think so, yeah. Masonry, that was Hartman Masonry.
And if you know where they're from-
Yeah, I guess, well, I'm going to ask you every time.
Yep, all right, all right, let me get their, let me get their quotes out so I can answer that. I know they're from Council Grove. Structural and miscellaneous steel is MDF Industries. And they are from-
I was going to say Furco used to be in Salina, but-
MDF is Salina. Carpentry package was Lloyd Builders, and just to further explain that, we, we bid the carpentry package, so what we did on that is prepare our estimate, and then we turned it into Brad and Kevin twenty-four hours in advance, so that we didn't have any, you know, any advantage. So sometimes we win those, and sometimes we don't, but we were, we got this one. Finished carpentry, uh, finished carpentry and casework, that's Timberline. Oh, I'm sorry, I should back up.
And Ron, you weren't here at the beginning, but Lloyd Builders, you know where they're at and from, and-
Uh, back to bid package for structural miscellaneous steel, MDF Industries is the material, and then Furco is the erector.
Yeah.
And they're out of Salina.
Salina, yeah.
Finished carpentry is Timberline, and they are out of Manhattan. Joint sealance and waterproofing is Restoration Waterproofing, they're out of Topeka. The EFS, and that's the, that stands for Exterior Insulating Finish System, it's like a, probably know the name, Drive-It product, or Stucco.
Yeah.
That is Roems, uh, Roemsburg Plastering.
They're out of St. Joe's.
They're out of St. Joe's.
That will be to match the Stucco, that's one of your existing buildings, I mean the-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I think we've got, the Stucco we specifies more to match the texture and color of the limestone that's on the current courthouse, that will kind of mimic that. They've got a kind of saying to finish to it, so it's-
We should figure we can afford limestone, so.
Right. I think that kept the historic people a little happier with the addition to it.
Oh, we, we had that cleaned here two, three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, on to bid package nine, roofing and sheet metal, that was Meridian Roofing, and they are out of Topeka. Door frames and hardware, that is material, that was by Negur. And they are out of St. Louis and Claycom, Missouri. Specialty doors, that's our overhead doors in Sallyport, that was by Stoner Door, and they are out of Topeka. Glass and glazing was through Manco Windows slash Interstate Glass. Junction City. Let's see, where are we? Gymsim Assemblies, High-Tech Interiors, and they are out of Wichita. Tiling, that's like ceramic or porcelain tile. That is Capital Tile, and they are out of Topeka. Acoustical panel ceilings, that is also High-Tech Interiors. Brazilian flooring and carpet is FDC Contract, and they're out of North Kansas City, Missouri. Travelled Applied Seamless Floor, that's like an epoxy type floor. That, uh, that was Pro Concrete Designs, and they are out of Riverside, Missouri. Painting, Maz Paint, they're out of Solomon, Gases. Uh, visual display boards, that's a small material item by a company called Arco, and that's just online.
Other words, all you're using them was just the boards and stuff that would-
Tack boards, yeah, tack boards, like these right here.
And that'd be stuff that, that, uh, that you would put out, Lloyd Builders would do?
Yes, yep.
That's part of that bid, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, same with the, like, the door frames-
Right.
And the millwork, that-
Yeah, that's interior carpentry work, or whatever you want to call it.
Yep. Uh, signage is by Star Signs. They are out of Lawrence. Uh, toilet compartments, there weren't any in this phase, they're all just single on restrooms. Specialties is Meyer Construction, and they're out of, I didn't bring their quote, they're out of Kansas City, or North Kansas City, I believe. Uh, lockers, um, that's EIP and Design Storage, that's material only, and I didn't bring their material quotes, but they're from wherever, Tennessee, I think one of them's from, and- Uh, flagpoles is Poltech. I'm not sure where they're out of, even that's, that's another one that's-
National company.
National company, yep. Uh, detention equipment is Poly Jail, and that's a, that's the size of one, so they have all the detention equipment and, and security electronics, and they're out of Noblesville, Indiana.
All the jails still.
All the jails still.
So only about three companies have bid on those anymore?
Yeah, it, it keeps dwindling.
Well, I know, yeah, but I mean, when we were at the pony conference, I think it was six then, yeah.
I'm not so sure, it might just be two now, where you were the last resort for that.
Yeah, these guys just keep dropping like flies, um, I think, and one of the ones, you got the one now is on their way out as well, too, with oversteams, so.
They need to be.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's pretty limited resources there.
Laundry equipment is RJ Cool, that's a national company as well. Uh, food service equipment was determined that that would just be part of the food service program now, I'm not sure how better to explain that, but, so there's no, no bids for that.
The venue will provide the hardware and stuff for us?
Yep.
We weren't talking details of all that yet?
We have not, no.
No, where they put in the ovens and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then it would just be part of our monthly fee that we pay for that service.
Then they would own it, and we'd just be, when we paid their monthly charge, or whatever, it'd be part of that fee, okay?
That we not only do, it reduces the cost to us upfront, but something was owed to them, and it's, it's the stuff that they want from their people.
Yeah.
So, you know, if they, if they don't like the equipment, they want to certify.
We put something in that they may not use, or no use.
Well, we coordinated all that with them upfront, too, when did the design, uh, we got with Jeff Green, CDM, make sure that design and equipment was what they were wanting there, so shouldn't have any issues there, but yeah, it kind of puts the ownership back on them after the bags.
Well, kind of like that, I bet, probably a few of those companies that are going to be still in business in this part of the country.
Yeah. Uh, window treatments, at the time of bid, we didn't have a bid, so we plugged in three thousand dollars for many blinds, if it comes in last great, you get the money back, so. Fuse, that was, uh, it's not applicable, it's for the next phase only. Conveying equipment for the new elevator for the jail was Tiss and Crup, and that's out of their Wichita office.
I know you guys had contracts then previously.
Years ago.
Yeah, um, I didn't know if you guys are still good with them, because you guys switched to-
Well, we never had a problem with them, they're just expensive as hell.
Right.
You know?
On the service side, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But they did, I mean, they did all right, they, they didn't want a service on an elevator, and they were very expensive, and I think they kind of priced themselves out of it intentionally, you know, so.
Okay, the, uh, let's see, conveying, uh, fire suppression is Bamford Fire, that's out of Salina. Uh, plumbing, it, uh, was lumped together with HVAC, they put together some combo bids, and that's Waldinger. And they are out of Wichita. So Waldinger has the plumbing, the HVAC, and the HVAC-
We just have one company to take care of all that stuff.
They will.
And multiple subcontractors, you know, you got a controls guy, and you got an HVAC contractor, so, yeah, that's good.
Don't have to, don't have to decide where it ends here and where it connects.
You don't get this thing going.
Point, 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 you're doing.
Yeah.
And Waldinger's a good company, but they actually got a branch in St. Joe's as well, too, they're a good company.
Uh, let's see, then the electrical and communications, that would be settled on Accurate Electric, and they're out of Salina as well. And one other part of this process, I bring it up because we did this with Accurate as well, one thing we do when we're, when we get guys who have bid the project, uh, we also go back and make sure they're qualified. Like Waldinger, we've worked with numerous times, and we know they're a large company, fantastic company, we didn't necessarily go back to them. But like Accurate, where we haven't worked on a big job with them before, we had them submit the last four years of their financials, to see how their business is doing. We met with them, uh, probably, let's see, three times with them to discuss manpower, to make sure they had that, um, to make sure they've got, they can staff the job properly, and that their qualifications are set to handle this kind of job, and then also what their backup plan is, if, if their portion of the work gets behind, how do they supplement their manpower? And so we, we met with numerous contractors like that, just to make sure they're able to handle the task, and, uh, so we felt control, uh, we felt comfortable with Accurate Electric handling this job. Uh, earthwork and site utilities was Boyd Excavating here in Abilene. And then asphalt ran with APAC out of Salina. Then the bottom line is contingency, that covers the what-ifs, and we've got kind of a description of that in our GMP amendment of what contingency covers, so we can go over that next as well. And then everything below the line, permits, fees, and insurance, our predetermined fee that was discussed during, back, I think in the interview phase, four and a half percent, the cost of the performance of payment bond, and then the total.
Is that four percent on the contingency, is that kind of a standard range, I guess?
Usually four to five percent is pretty standard on a project like this, um, renovation work usually is a little bit heavier than that, and sometimes you go a little bit lighter, I don't know.
So usually saying five, what I was, curious.
You know, in my opinion, I think four percent would be sufficient for the addition of new one out there. I think the only thing that really, my question is, what's buried out there underneath there, because I know that's been brought up multiple times with John and Brad, and everybody, that there may be some old foundations, or a piece of an old tunnel out there that went to the Creamery.
Treasures.
Treasures, yeah. We don't need to find any treasures, who would shut down construction?
Well, depends what kind of you find.
Right, right. But, yeah, I feel that amount would be sufficient for a project.
Or was the, I mean, I don't have to go through all of them, this was the low bid, or was this the best bid?
Well, for the, for the most part, everyone on here was a low bidder, but we also went with the most responsive bidder as well. So, for example, uh, the steel material, there was a company called, uh, I can't remember the name, Lopez Steel, I think.
Right.
That, uh, they, they were low, low bid for the material on the front, but when we called them, they said, "Well, yeah, but we can't, uh, we can't buy from Bullcraft Joyce and Deck anymore, so you're going to have to purchase that, and we don't have an account with any trucking firm, so you're going to have to do that", and by the time we started adding up all that stuff, um, we went back to them and said, "Can you even, you know, how long will it take you to produce that?", and ended up being a small shop, and we realized it probably just wasn't going to work. So then we went with the next low bid, uh, which would be the most responsive, I guess is the word we would use, and, uh, and put them in, so, um-
Everyone's on a large project, you'll hear, where, for, whether it's a hardship, or unforeseen, or whatever, but, so how's that handled if someone, for whatever reason, can only do part of it, or get off track, then where, where do you take over, or how do you-
Right, well, we-
Take care of that?
We try to get all that done on the front end, and we can really tell how well a sub's going to perform, almost even in the submittal phase, how long does it take to get their documents in, how complete are they? And then we start, uh, we start discussing when they're going to be on site, if they start hemming and hawing, we'll know right away. The worst case can, I mean, we've, we've had to do this, but worst-case scenario is a subcontractor can get fired, just have to tell them, "You can't do it", but we really hate doing that. What we might do, say if it's a steel erector, say he's falling behind, he can't get it done, he can't find any manpower, what we'll do is reach out to other steel erector subcontractors and say, "How many men have you got? Are they qualified? Let's bring them in, and we'll supplement their workforce, and to get the project back on schedule", and then whatever those costs are, we just take out of the steel erector's contract. If they can't do that, and we can't find anybody, and they're just continually laying down on the job, then we'll have to terminate their contract and bring someone else in. But, uh, we use that as a last-case scenario, because it often, it often hurts the job a little bit, because now you're bringing somebody fresh in, and so you, you lose a little bit of time, there's a learning curve for them to ramp up, and it hurts the job in the fact that they're not, you know, necessarily a low bidder, you know, anymore, so there's costs associated with having to bring someone else in, but. We, uh, we meet with the guys weekly onsite, the superintendent does, and then I come every two weeks and meet with the boys, and then once a month, we bring not only their foreman, their project, but their project manager as well, just so we can continually track how these guys are doing.
On key subs and stuff, do you guys have some of the key subs or bigger players bonded on this, that you haven't worked with, or-
We do.
Certain contract amount, that's always a good way to, if you have to lean the bond, if you're especially laying down-
Yep.
-on the job.
Uh, we for sure carried a bond on Waldinger, even though they're a large enough company, they can handle it, we carried it just because their contract amount is so large. And also Accurate Electric, we carried bond costs on them as well. Uh, we may have, we may have carried, uh, we did in fact, sorry, on Hartman Masonry, um, even though they're, they're going to be fine, they're a tremendous mason. Again, they're dollar now, almost nine-hundred thousand, we went ahead and carried a bond on them as well.
That's kind of your major components between the local and the masonry, and that's kind of your big ticket items on a jail project, I guess.
Okay. Questions from our part, or comment?
The, um, steel testing, is that part of this bid, on the concrete?
It is, yes.
Special inspections.
Who's doing that?
Uh, that is, uh-
I imagine it's it on a bitchy here.
No, I brought them, uh, Col Valley.
Okay.
Col Valley Engineering, and that's carried up in our general conditions line item.
Okay.
And so they'll do concrete, steel, masonry, asphalt, soils, compaction tests.
It sounds like Kenny's had a good working relationship with Col Valley for quite some time, so, thank you, John.
Yeah, we do a lot, we want to avoid the situation like we got there, yeah.
Are you guys dealing with any hazardous material, anything?
Not in this scope of work, uh, when we get to the courthouse renovation side, there is some.
Okay. Asbestos?
Yeah.
Tile?
We got some tile on the floor that's-
Minimal, but, yeah.
Because you done an assessment of that?
Yeah.
Couple, three years ago, or?
Yeah, we have, exactly, we did, and it's, you can get the protect, so.
Yeah.
And it wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be, if you remember, and when we paid the company to come in and do that, so.
Yeah, ACM, that was the company we hired to do that, and my fear was this whole ceiling tile, the glue that was holding it up there was going to contain asbestos, but thankfully it did not, so.
Tornado at Chapman High School, and it was, Play Center was built right after that, and they didn't have any in it, in Chapman High School, the ceiling, ceiling tile, you know, ceiling, we had a chemistry room down there, it was armed, and that was back in eighty-nine, or eighty- You know, one, uh, negative air pressure and stuff, cost about ten thousand bucks to, to do that.
Sure. Yeah, I think we're pretty much limited to the floor tile and the corridors and a few other key places, so.
Any further questions on this?
Okay.
Okay. Now, I brought, uh, I'll just run through some clarifications, uh, from our bid that I have to include with the amendment, um, to the, that explains our GMP, and, but I only brought two copies of those.
You want me to print some of those?
Um, well, we could, or there's only nine items, I can just, if you want, I can read through, or. So the clarifications that you'll see on the amendment, the exhibit B, I'll just read through these real quick. The pricing has been based on bid documents prepared by Goldberg Group dated March eighteenth, and all their subsequent attenda. Want to remind everyone, this pricing is for the jail addition portion of the project only, it doesn't include any work associated with- It doesn't include any work associated with courthouse renovation. Uh, every effort has been made to provide a complete job. However, items that are not shown in the documents may not be included. Uh, pricing has been based on work beginning the third quarter of twenty nineteen, which will be in here on in a couple of weeks. Uh, we have not included an allowance for moisture mitigation for flooring materials and that's just, uh. So luckily the floor is one of the first things that gets poured, but something may come up where it still hasn't reached its, hasn't released all of its water by the time we want to put flooring down. And if that's the case, sometimes we have to put a product down on top of that before we put flooring down. It's a, it's a small item, but a, one of our standard fine print items. Uh, we have included permit fees and builder's risk insurance. We have excluded sales tax, hazardous material remediation, which we shouldn't have unless we find something underground. Uh, we have excluded any rock or unsuitable fill and Kevin mentioned that, you know, if there's something out there underground that we don't know about. And then any owner furnished items like phones, furnishings, which is like chairs and desks, and kitchen equipment. So another way to describe furnishings are, I've heard said it kind of dumbs it down, but it explains it for me. Is if you take the building and shake it, if something falls out, that's kind of an owner furnished item.
Did Bell Springs, did that have a basement underneath the whole thing or just partial or do you recall?
Honestly don't know. Man, the part that we rented and we occupied did not. Now, I'm told that the one, the big part back where the actual ice pit was did, but we haven't been able to find any documentation to.
And the demolition, demolition on that, John?
Uh, Boyd did the demolition and I visited with him and he said, yes, there was a basement and some things were pushed in. That's my reason for visiting with Kevin.
Would that be in the footprint then or is it just a little out right at the edge of the footprint?
East side of the footprint, isn't it?
It appears to be the edge.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you might.
That's the north part also.
East port.
Northeast.
Yeah, right.
Cross our fingers, hopefully it just got.
It's out of the footprint.
There might be pigeon droppings.
What's that?
Petrified pigeon droppings.
I imagine it might be. But yeah, I know when we did the soil borings, we kind of hit the four corners in the center of the building and they didn't encounter anything in the soil boring. But yeah, from over here, yeah, there's potentially some foundation underneath there. We won't know until we crack the lid on the ground out there.
Right, then the last item is kind of a long paragraph. It explains that contingency line item. So I'll read it and then I've, of course, attached it as part of the amendment so we can, you can read it yourself, but. Uh, it says a project contingency has been included. Funds within the project contingency can be used at the discretion of the construction manager for all items described as cost of the work within the contract. Examples of costs to be paid from this contingency include, but are not limited to those that result from, one, detail resolution, which may be minor items required to complete a detail that may not have been perfectly clear in the design documents. Two, scope coordination by the contractor or a subcontractor at any tier. Three, purchasing, estimating and scheduling difficulties. For example, a change in the local material labor market conditions at time of bidding. Items that were missed in the estimate during the final development of the GMP, but which are required expressly or by necessarily implication by the contract documents for a complete project. The re-provisionment of the services of a subcontractor at any tier due determination for any reason. Uh, costs for delay recovery caused by weather, non-performance or unforeseen conditions. Project contingency shall not be used for scope added to the project unless contingency funds remain unused at the completion of the project. So what that means is if Brad comes in and says, I'd like gold toilets and I'd like three extra doors, that doesn't come out of contingency. So, but.
Come out of my salary because I probably.
So the way we handle that is every month or every two weeks or however often we want to meet, we'll carry, uh, we'll carry spreadsheets. Uh, so everyone can see where these monies have been spent. And we keep two separate tallies. Uh, the contingency is called that, so if there's monies left at the end of the job, it's yours. So we'll keep a tally of project items that we had to use contingency on. And then we'll keep a line item for project items where somebody says, hey, can we add a TV over here or another marker board? That'd be an owner item. And then we just keep tallies and then if there's monies left over here in the project contingency, it can pay for all those change order items. And then if whatever the balance is, goes back to you.
Well, we have some input on those decisions if we're gonna use some contingency.
You mean, uh, on the, yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll, yes, we'll talk about those in our, in our weekly time. That's a line item in every agenda that we'll do. And we'll say, I mean, we might not say, uh, when you say input, what we might do, let's say that we see a cold spell coming up. We need to keep the mason going. We may take some money out of contingency to tarp a certain area. We may not ask you to do that. We just may do that. But absolutely you would have. I mean, we would review all of those so you knew where they were. And then of course, any change orders you obviously would have.
Yeah, but change orders come before us then. And then, and then the other, if the commission agrees to it, and I don't know, but have to do it formally or informally. But we could direct that Brad just has the authority to.
Well, right to a certain point, I mean.
Well.
Yeah. I mean, if it's a major, yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, if it's a change order, that'd be different.
Well, yeah, I mean, but there could be a small change order that could amount, you know, nothing, but it still is a change order that, you know, maybe five hundred dollars and maybe five thousand.
We probably should approve those, but some of those you might be able to proceed if, if Brad.
Yeah. Well, we don't want to hold you.
You know.
We don't want to hold, yeah.
I guess, and we don't want to have a special meeting unless it's.
Yeah, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody, all different states we're working in, they all call it something different. Whether it's a proposed change order or change order request, I'm trying to think what you guys call it.
Uh, scope change proposal.
Scope change. Typically, we found the best way to expedite that stuff is to have them prepare that if there's an issue that comes up, something needs to get added.
You're gonna see it before it happens.
Correct. So then we would review it, sign off on it, send it to Brad to review and sign off on. Yeah, just to keep things going. It's under a certain amount of whatever threshold you guys have for that. And then once we get to a certain point, we'll take all those scope change proposals and issue a formal change order to the contracted project. And that's where that would go before you guys for review and review.
In other words, it'd be like a spreadsheet and this was, this much, this has been, that's.
Right.
End up with ten thousand, two hundred dollars.
Right.
You know, you got five items.
So we don't sort the project, right? Micromanaging in the weeds a little.
Yeah, now if there's something major issue that comes up, obviously we'd go to Brad and you, but you know, there's small little things that come up.
Well, use the example out here, we had something out here with the dirt work to start out with.
Right.
I mean, it could be, you know, minor and it could be another ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
Right, right. So yeah, just understand what you guys' threshold is for that, you know, that's.
Cause sometimes too, change orders can be rejected by a commission and so, I mean, you know, we, we don't want to get the, have the runaway force on this and then we'll find out where. I don't, John, do you have, I know you aren't gonna be here, but procedurally, you kind of, anything you want to add to this or are we covered in?
You're awesome, Brad.
Okay.
Now, there'll be a lot of communication when stuff like that comes up. Usually Tom or Randy's on the phone maybe before this issue gets resolved. They're not going to Brad or we're all going to Brad, you know, so there's gonna be a lot of discussion. It's gonna be pretty transparent what goes on. So it shouldn't be any surprises come change order.
Okay. And I don't think there will be. I just, you just in your mind try to think, is there something unforeseen or something, you don't want to overlook something.
Sure, absolutely.
Any further questions? Anything I might have missed?
I mean, it may not be the appropriate place to ask it, but who are we gonna have watching them?
Well, it was gonna be John.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I knew that.
But then I think that's gonna follow me temporarily till we get replacement for John, aren't we?
And that's something we'll be out here in a couple of weeks as well too, or however frequent you want us out here.
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to have, I mean, not that you have to be, but I mean, like say you're starting a new project, you're pouring concrete. I mean, I, you know, you want somebody there to, to make sure it's done right, not that you guys want.
Like the slump test, who does that?
Yeah, so that'll be part of the independent testing company. So Call Valley will be onsite watching all that stuff and documenting.
Air test.
As well too. Yeah, they're doing slum tests, checking rebar placement, they're checking, you know, whatever the case is.
Right.
Those people will still embrace that assume on the, on the concrete floors.
Right.
So yeah, so there's gonna be a joint effort between either Brad or whoever else on, and then myself and then Call Valley as well too.
But you know, and some of the stuff, you know, the steel and stuff like that, it's not near as much when you get inside and the, electrical and stuff like that, you know, do you do, you know, initial inspections? Well, who will, you know, like, you know, whoever's doing that? Will it, has somebody that, you know, besides you that will be doing these or your superintendent?
Yeah, our superintendent.
Well, I'd like to see somebody from our side being there for the initial inspection. You get twenty-five percent done, you know, or, you know, so much.
Right. What I'd recommend is if we end up siding, say every two weeks we have a progress meeting or owner architect contractor meeting. Um, we've then go and do a walkthrough of the, of the facility after we have that meeting. So that way everybody can see the same thing at the same time. If there's questions, concerns, whatever the case is.
Okay, then this is also on the other side of what Janelle will be interested in?
Okay.
Is payment. How much, you know, progress payments, uh, you'll have those every other, every other week, two weeks?
Uh, every month.
Every month, you did every month.
And then we'll fit it to your schedule.
But I mean, it's a hundred percent, you know, like say, uh, the dirt, earth worth, it takes six weeks to do it. And he's seventy-five percent done, paying seventy-five percent or do we hold some of that?
Yep, so we'll bill every month based on percent complete. So you'll see a line item with what they call the schedule of values. Like say, earthwork and masonry, steel, whatever. And then we'll plug in what percent that he's either billing for or what we think he is. So if he's fifteen percent, we'll plug in fifteen percent and then you'll hold, I'll have to relook at the contract. But it's either five or ten percent retained and you'll hold back from every payment.
Steel, uh, is it paid for when it's manufactured or delivered on site?
It will be, if we, well, we'll, we'll do it one of two ways. Hopefully it would just be onsite because that's a lot easier to bill for. Everybody can come up with a price on it. If for some reason our site is too congested at, at the time and we have to store it at their warehouse, then he'll have to provide a bill of materials, photographs, something that's identifying that that steel is our steel and not somebody else's.
Dixon County jail project, we, on the, you know, on the tag there, that deal says this word.
Yeah, it has to be identified as our project. And then, uh, and then we'll bill for materials stored offsite.
Right.
And most of the time, if it's locally like this, we'll just drive over and put our own eyes on it first.
Yeah.
Get back a step on the inspection stuff. I assume the city's gonna be doing their inspection, whether it's Travis or whoever, if you'll be here onsite. I assume that would be.
Shut off the recorder there, Kathy.
There'll be someone.
I assume there'll be somebody checking.
I mean, they're gonna want to see the pressure test for, I mean, they're gonna want to check the life, you know, check the tines, utilities and stuff like that. So they'll be wanting to oversee from somewhat anyway from the city department as well, so. Sorry, anyone?
No, that's right. And then what, so we'll, uh, we'll do that once a month. Um, and but the, the schedule of what day of the month will probably coincide with what days we decide to, uh, have our owner architect contractor meetings onsite so that we can go through and everybody agree that, yeah, you really are ten percent done. You know, or whatever. And then however, the approval process needs to go through you during meeting.
In other words, you will do the progress payments?
Yeah, I'll put those together.
Okay, and then you'll present them to Brad?
I'll give them to Kevin.
They'll move to, we'll review it to make sure it's in line with what we're seeing, what's going on, and then we'll process it and sign off on it and send it to Brad. Pretty good to process on here and so, so there's, yeah, several levels of checking going on here.
Have there been pretty dramatic changes or many changes on how the site's secured just from safety or making sure unauthorized people aren't taking a look at things?
Yeah.
How do you handle that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a perimeter fence around the whole building, six foot chain link fence. We'll see about building lighting. If it's really dark, sometimes we'll throw on some temporary wall packs on the building to help light it up. And then of course, there'll be security driving by. I would hope that, I mean, since.
And we do have, you know, the sheriff here.
Yeah.
But, you know, still.
It's pretty stupid to try to do, but it never stops enough. I mean, it, it probably can happen, so. And I think we have some cameras outside there too.
They had one in another city where, I mean, they just, somehow they got in there and they just drove through the fence and they ran in and out of there in a few minutes.
Yeah, yep. No, we do, we do what we can to keep everything locked up and tied up and we get, we get the, the bad guys in every now and then. But we do what we can and then we also work on, you know, public safety if we're, um, this will come into play, you know, maybe further down the road, but making sure that the, the public, I mean, we not only try to keep our guys safe, but public when they're walking by, that they've got a clear path, they've got wayfinding signs, a way to get in the building. It shouldn't bother us too much on this addition, but we do, we do take care of things.
Okay.
And I think one important thing to all of us here, I'm speaking hopefully for all of us, is that we come in this project within budget guidelines. Because the, the public's looking at us obviously and of course not compromising the quality of labor and materials.
Yes.
And I think from day one, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but we kind of targeted the eleven million mark for this part of the project and that leaves four for. So we're not too far off. I know two hundred and ninety thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in the whole scheme of things. You know, take the contingency out, we're underneath, so.
Yeah, no, I think we're sitting in pretty good shape and I don't know if there's been any further development on the historic tax credit.
No, we're way too early to even be considering it. We're waiting up for the courthouse part.
Yeah, that's something we're still thinking about and working on is just how to scale some of the stuff back. It's been a happy there at the state level as well too, so we're still shaping that four thousand still so we can get that thing pulled within budget. Pretty extensive renovation.
And we're hopeful that, you know, things will work out and there are some benefits to that. And, you know, that's the other thing, we are kind of considered a historic town, you might say to a certain degree, so. We don't, certainly don't want to overlook that.
Sure.
I mean, there is, there's a plus side to it, even though there's a few more hoops to jump through.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll stay after that and keep working with Brad and focus there at the state so we can keep that on track. Cause I know they were, that was one of the things they even held with the original building permit was, um, they had a heritage commissioner here in town. Um, had to have approval from the state since they could not review that, played an issue of building permit. Make sure since it's in that historic district that that addition was satisfactorily designed, I think you will, to go along with the historic courthouse or the courthouse that's in the historic district, so. But no, we will continue to work with those guys, keep things moving forward.
Questions or concerns?
Got eleven minutes, Lynn.
I thought this was just part one. I think it's another stack of papers.
Timeline, what are we looking at starting? What are you looking at finishing?
Well, if, if we're ready to sign, uh, it'll take just a couple of weeks just to get trailers here, fences here, get everything erected. Uh, the superintendent we have planned is ready anytime, uh, more than ready. So, uh, and we're ready to get him off the job. He's just kind of babysitting until this one's ready. Uh, we planned on thirteen to fourteen months. The first time I ran the schedule, I was about thirteen. Uh, it seems like lately, uh, jobs just are taking longer than, than we anticipate. So I, I plan on fourteen months. So if it was, uh, August first, that would be, uh, till October of twenty twenty.
Coincidentally, nothing matters with the superintendent that works for, for Lloyd Miller's, was born and raised in Solomon, so.
Is that right?
Yeah. He's a gorilla.
We'll get another one?
I assumed you'd requested Tom on this project. I've worked with him on a previous project. I think he's a great superintendent. He obviously knows the area. Him and I were just out in the parking lot talking about the subs on this list and he was pretty happy with the subs that we saw. I think he's worked with the majority of them before as well too, so that was always a positive.
Tom's a, he's an old school superintendent, so the only time you'll find him in the trailer is if he's looking at plans or eating his lunch. He doesn't like to just sit in there. He's out busy checking and motivating, we'll call it, and, yeah.
Well, it's exciting next step ahead of us, so.
Absolutely.
Onward and forward.
Okay.
So what do you need a motion, Lynn?
Um, I don't know that they're just.
They guaranteed their agreement, but they guaranteed maximum price, so.
And I do have two copies of that. If you'd like. I do have two copies of that, if you'd like to flip through this.
Yeah, I would, okay.
Sure.
And just, uh, briefly, I'll just run through it, uh, the first two pages are really at least the guaranteed maximum price.
Eleven million, am I correct here?
Yes, yep.
Yep, okay.
Um, the third page is just a letter from us that states the same thing, here's our proposal for that dollar amount. As part of exhibit B, we've listed the bid package dollar amounts that matches what you would see there, just without the subcontractors. Uh, the last page of exhibit B are the nine items that I read through, uh, just clarifications. And then the last several pages just lists out the specification sections, the project official, and all of the drawings that...
So, for the standard A I A documentation.
Yep.
And then Goldberg had the material, I mean, like, uh, like, say, we're gonna want this kind of window, you know, double pane, you've got all that.
All that stuff is specified, and it's...
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, if we had that, it'd be...
Yeah, and I, I think you probably got a couple over here on this there, but there's a thousand pages of specifications.
I don't have time like they have, well, I do, no, I don't have much time like when I broke my leg, but you'd be glad I, gee, you can ask Brad, I had a lot more time than I was.
Yeah.
Oh, you weren't that.
Just better wasn't, didn't laugh.
I think literally it's a thousand pages long, and then it goes two hundred sheets of drawings, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Enters Lloyd Miller's house, that we don't do anything on our side, with our returns contract.
Correct, we have builder's risk and liability, that's two sides.
Do you need the sales tax exemption certificate?
Uh, I think we may have it already.
Yeah. At least for the jail side.
Yes.
So we have this agreement, and I guess all we need is a motion to, uh, it's that guaranteed maximum price in the project, um, prepared by Goldberg Group Architects, the cost of the work. Eleven million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars.
With jail project only?
Uh, yes, that's jail project, and does not, the renovation is a separate, will be separate.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion for, uh, to enter that agreement on the next step, is there a second?
Second.
And the motion and the second, any further discussion or questions? And it's all itemized here, and it has all been reviewed.
I just, it wasn't, not part of the motion or anything like this, or anything, but, um, our subcontractors are gonna be here, uh, they'll have a technical certificate, they go up here to... You furnish them, or do we furnish them to them, Janelle?
We furnish that.
Okay.
We've got it from you, and we've got ours for our purchases, then we send a blank one to them.
Okay. What part of the motion?
Okay, any other discussion? And this will enable me to go ahead and assign on behalf of the commission. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any other items of discussion, or anything that you would, regarding the project, that anyone would wanna bring up at this time?
We look forward to working with you folks and supporting in, what, seeing this project through for Dickinson County, and, and hoping it all works out well.
Well, and as I look at all of the subcontractors and where they're coming from out of town, a- and yet they're within the, a lot of them in the Kansas area, in Kansas City and so on, um, you know, they're, they're certainly, it's gonna help some of the local economy, you might say, on just when they're spending the night here at the hotels, and... Eating at the restaurants and so on, and so, that's kind of one of the economic boosts, that it's, even though it's short term of the length of the project, um, I, I think people will appreciate that here, uh, in Ambly, so, we've got good food.
Might, they might have, they might have, go to lunch at eleven rather than twelve, so they can get them.
Okay, uh, if that's all, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Seconding.
And the motion, the second to adjourn, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.